I probably don't want to go because of stuff on the Do you have your back in top?
No, I didn't.
Recording in progress.
That was last month. That's where he was last month.
Oh, maybe it's the work meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I couldn't remember. I knew it was going to be August, September, but I couldn't remember which one.
A little bit of an extra microphone on somewhere.
That's not muted.
Yeah, discussion. It started at the start.
Think so.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'll call to order the Wednesday, August 16th Trinidad Planning Commission meeting. We will begin with Volto.
Commissioner Slay.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hakenman.
I also am here.
Commissioner Johnson. Looks like Commissioner Cole and Commissioner Hopkins are.
Moving on to minutes, we needed to do two separate things, just because I was not present for the April 19th meeting. Okay, so. Let you guys talk about that one first. I feel like I've seen this before. Have we not?
They were in the June bracket that we, and we didn't actually take action.
Okay, that's why I seen it before.
We approve of the minutes from April 19th.
A second. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will abstain.
Well, we, you know, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, prove on that. Oh, because then that drops below course for that particular item. All right. So we'll have to see those a third time then. That catch. However, I believe we're in good stead for the July 19th meeting because I see three of the four people are actually in the room tonight and here we can all talk. Um, I had a couple of things on here. I believe this one city staff, Gabe was here, not Anton. Is that correct? Is that the meeting I remember was Gabe?
That was the 12th. That was the special meeting on the 12th.
Thank you. Okay. So those minutes we haven't seen yet from the special meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. That takes care of, I think, my only other. Can I interject for a moment that these are available? Does the special meeting minutes at the top?
Yes, they are. You're right.
The 12th was the special meeting.
I didn't have anything. I saw.
I reached out to me by email and reminded me that without having shared some rationale for my opposition to the Davis project, it may be considered arbitrary and capricious. So I just wanted to say that at this moment, I'm willing to share some rationale if you find that is helpful or necessary, and if not, I'm happy just to use as they are.
I think since it didn't change the outcome.
I did. Okay, I moved to approve the July 19th minutes with the removal of the word special with the heading. Polls in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. All right, moving on now. Approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any desired changes to tonight's agenda?
I'm just tempted to ask Trevor. Another thing we could really work on, maybe grants. Other high priority items. Is this the proper order for these four agenda items? Or are there, or should we change it so that we make sure that we get through some of those ones that are real close to closure on the grant?
They, they're all ending at the end of the month, and so it'd be good to get as far as we can on I'm just three, two, three, and four. I'm not sure it really matters either way.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that it's me that.
I mean, unless, I mean, I guess, I mean, the administrative CDP regulations might be ready for an actual recommendation to the city council at this point, and that would be nice to have before the grant ends. But I don't think we're going to get final action on two or four.
I, I just wanted to make sure whatever was applicable to you.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
So.
There.
I, I.
All right. All right, jumping in then with items from the floor. This is the time for any members of the public to express any items that are not appearing on the agenda. I see it appears we have two members of the public up on the screen tonight. Please unmute yourself for speak if you'd like to address us. All right. Cherry might be trying.
I'm trying. I'm trying. There I am. I just want to say I haven't been on the website for a while and it's lovely. So congratulations, City of Trinidad for updating the website. It did take me a little while to navigate and find the Zoom link, but I just wanted to say thank you for updating it and, you know, I look forward to what I look on as a community member, our policies, like the STR policy, you know, you know, various different things. So as I navigate it, I might come back with some feedback, but I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate the update on the website.
Thank you. Duly noted. And I believe Mayor Kelly is a great person to offer the feedback. I think, I believe she's kind of taken the point on the design and tweaks so far. So feel free to inundate her with that unless she directs you otherwise. Thanks. Um, I don't see anybody in the room here, so we will then move on and come back to agenda, agenda number one. Trevor.
I'm speaking through the. Um, so this is just the monthly update on the trail closures that were approved by the planning commission. Um, in April, one of the conditions was that you receive regular reports of your meeting on the status. Um, so as you know, the Perfor Creek Trail has been reopened since then. Axal and Greenwich Memorial Trail remains closed. Um, there has not been any um, new, new, anything new to report since the last.
Anything from the commission?
Uh, we did reference the GHD feasibility study. And that was supposed to have been done at the end of the, late July. Do we know if that's complete?
I have not received the copy, but we could ask about that.
Are any TMT meetings currently planned?
There are, but not related to this topic, but we could request that this topic be on.
Yeah, so Steve Allen will be back on Monday, so he's on vacation. I had reached out to him to try to see what the status is of that report. So yeah, the city has not received it yet. And regarding the chair and management team, they're currently trying to get a meeting together, but they haven't set up a date. But like Trevor said, that wasn't planned on the agenda. So specifically, what would you like from the other, the fact that hopefully they'll have the report soon?
I guess, understanding of where they are. It sounds like it was supposed to be available in July, right?
Yeah, the, the way, my understanding was feasibility report was to set the stage for a potential need to and so to me, that's fairly critical to get that in place as soon as possible if we indeed hope to stay on schedule to open it early next year or next year. So it's just a matter of keeping the ball rolling, I suppose, is what I'm trying to say. So I just.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, like I said, once we get it from Steve Allen, then we can, you know, I guess part of it, it was mentioned before was the fact that the report was requested by the chair, I, but hopefully we'll be able to receive a copy in the city.
Yeah, I would just add that there's a lot of concern among the public about the amount of progress that was being made towards these things. So certainly, I'm sure that report will have a lot of internal information in it, but just the fact that the report is completed and is being reviewed by the appropriate parties, I think is enough to indicate that there is in fact still progress being made after we have closure. So more interested in, you know, the assurance that progress is being made and the fact of the actual context of that.
Right. That makes sense. Yeah, the city is anxious to from staff level and I'm sure from a council level, I know to get the trail, you know, open as soon as it can be feasibly made safe and, and hopefully improved according to the recommendations on that report. Yeah, since Trevor started off by saying words, you know, trail closures, I did want to indicate for your information that the coastal commission is having their monthly meeting in Crescent City at the Elk Valley Rancheria on September 6th, 7th, and 8th. And the Vanwood Trail is one of the agenda items that was appealed which should be on their agenda during that period.
And then, thank you. I have just one other thing just to remind that the commission is really interested in understanding from the management team our desire to have them pursue an alternate interim reopening with the recognition that this project has the potential to go on for some length of time. We'd like to see and we, short of making it a condition of approval for the permits and the closure, the initial one, but we really want to see and understand the willingness, the desire. So I mean, specific questions, if that needs to be an agenda, I have no concept of how those meetings go and how they run. So whatever, whatever manner that can happen. And then obviously just some information back on.
Yeah, that makes sense, you know, as to timeline and the fact that depending on the scope of the improvements, you know, hopefully it will be able to be opened by next season, meaning around, around September, May, before we get the visitors season of the summer, summer visiting season. So ideally, it could even be fully improved or improved sufficiently to be open, but that's a very good question to pose to the chair and management team.
I'll open this to public comment. I'm not seeing any. Again, there's nobody present to agree back to us. All right, no action required from us, Trevor, right?
I just got a little more quick thought, which is going to make me sound like a conspiracy theorist, but I just saw that Tropical Storm Hillary has formed in the Eastern Pacific and is going to be moving in an almost due north direction and directing a lot of like southerly, you know, swell energy in this direction. And I was wondering, I'm not an oceanographer. I don't really know much about the offshore bath imagery, but are there does that each get a lot of exposure to the south? Like if there's a significant southerly swell, does that have the potential to damage any infrastructure, including the fence that is there?
Good question.
Actually, just keep in mind that these anomalous sort of weather events might be coming, might be becoming more frequent. So I just wanted to make sure that somebody was aware of the fact that I've got a bunch of south walls.
So, uh, September, the after Labor Day. Um, we should keep an eye on. Like, would you relay that to, because public works goes down in check set every week or so. Um, so maybe keep an eye on the waves from that storm.
It's testing. Like the hardware folks will tell me that quite a bit about how that area receives southerly swell, so maybe.
I mean, it, it is exposed to southerly swell, so. And it if there's a big storm coming, they'll try and get people to get their boats out, for example, but they're probably going to shut down on Monday anyway. There's no problem.
But you'll get with public works, Eli, just give a heads up that potentially a storm entering back running and might need to change the frequency with which they're inspecting, I guess.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so you're saying it's currently warming in the Pacific?
Yeah, it's off to southern mid, um, it's really its way up to the west side of the bottom, potentially impacting as a tropical cyclone like San Diego and LA. So it's directing a lot of energy towards the north.
Okay. Do they have any date, projected date for any landfall around?
Yeah, I think it should be in Southern California. These are all projections at this point, the Southern California, the 21st.
So, oh, okay. So, so that'll be on Monday.
I don't know if the swell will arrive if it does.
Okay, yes, well, we will notify. All right. Okay. Thank you. And I'm just here for this one item because I have a webinar talking about electricity from RCA, so I thought I'd turn it up back up.
Yeah.
So I'll try to get that information, Joy.
All right, thank you, Eli. All right, then, in that case, moving on to agenda item number two, the parking study.
All right, so I wanted to get this to the planning commission and I didn't finalize it because I wanted to get some input questions, thoughts. I have some notes in the text. There we have a lot of information and, you know, how to present it and what to present, how detailed to present it, you know, too much information could be too confusing. Yeah, I think you know, my inventory, you know, measured curbs and things, but you know, I think if we're going to do a real red curb inventory, it needs to be the city engineer going out there. You'll, uh, so anyway, it's not, you know, specific engineering standards. Uh, so yeah, I have some notes in there or some questions, some of my thoughts, but I'm also do you have other thoughts, ideas, questions? Do you think things aren't, aren't clear in some locations? Um, I just wanted to get some your input, any public input before, and I also I want to get this to the coastal commission, but I'm going to add the trails on these maps before, because one of the key things is how parking affects public access. So before I send it to the coastal commission, I want to put the trails on the map, um, which I'm waiting for. Um, but I also want to get coastal commission input for finalizing this since they asked for the study.
Okay, thank you. Any questions just to the staff or the commission, just jump right in?
Uh, any other question?
Yeah.
Um, I guess my question, maybe bordering on concern is about uh, the study having a tone that, that parking is this resource that helps ensure coastal access and wondering if that is sort of the position of the coastal commission. It seems that, you know, the other view, which is that parking is just an area of stuff used for destroying gas machines, doesn't appear at all for, for, like, uh, isn't the, like, the idea that parking is this resource to ensure coastal access, is that the position of the coastal?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's a big issue of the coastal mission. I am, I mean, Trinidad is so isolated. Vehicles are, I mean, if you, I mean, there's more vehicles in Trinidad than there are. Um, so I think it's, it's a, it's a community issue too, I think, for Trinidad. Without public transport and things like that.
Doesn't it be kind of in a dimension of that standpoint?
No, it, I mean, that's a good point because, you know, like the, the city of Arcata is, you know, reducing parking standards and reducing parking requirements, partly to try and encourage alter, alternative modes of transportation. Um, you know, personally, yeah, I think there's some issues with that in Arcata too. I mean, um, anywhere around here is somewhat isolated to some degree, um, and the weather, um, that's people. And, you know, then my other thought more recently has been, well, if it's going all electric anyway. It's just creepy how gas is, it's kind of been the driving factor for getting rid of cars. If it's going all electric, then it's better.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, that's a good point. I also, I, I argue as well. The driver and pedestrian safety is a factor as well, right? So even if you do, if the the carbon footprint, there's still, by virtue of making the city car friendly or inherent pedestrian unfriendlyness, there's a little, you know, so.
Yeah, well, I think we want to do both. You know, I think we want to, we want to recognize that people are going to be driving here. And I think that's, you know, one of the recommendations is, is looking at how to make pedestrian safer. So, um, so yeah, I think that that, you know, that sort of more rounded discussion could be included in the report in terms of why it's geared related.
Yeah, I mean, I would if, if the, one of the main conclusions is that there's not a parking problem per se, I think that there's other related issues that could certainly be resolved, right? Like, I think that it's easy to argue that you can ensure coastal access if you can improve pedestrian and active transportation use. I think that if you look at parking issues, you can also ensure the safety of the folks who are walking on a town and perhaps using transportation. And then, if it's really fully necessary to support those goals, then that's, I think, the time to start thinking about clarifying where spots exist and then be striving and stuff like that. For those that have toxic to solve, should I forbid, but.
No, I, I think those are good, good insights.
Do those mesh okay with the SB2 goals for just the parking study? I mean, they're very important.
So the connection with.
It's kind of a bigger issue for the city as a whole. This is one, you know, one.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, I think that is, that's a good point. I mean, we, we sort of have to narrow the study to, to something, um, and, you know, pedestrian safety was not really what we were looking at in here. Um, and so I don't want to make too many recommendations or conclusions about that because that's not what we were looking at. Um, but yeah, so one of the main purposes that we did this is because with our ADU ordinance, the coastal commission said, well, do you have enough parking? You have to show us you have enough parking without impacting public access to our ADUs. So that's the connection with the SB2 housing grant, is that the coastal commission wouldn't take our ordinance without it.
I understand that as well. I think that whether, whether it's emphasized in the mountain report or not, take away here, so there's not really a parking problem. So there's ways to to make the city safer and, and more pedestrian friendly. Now we have the data to support that.
Yeah, that concentrate on other things.
Totally.
Anything on, uh, if you start your, the table of contents?
Well, I'd like to make a couple of general comments. First of all, thank you very much. This is a lot of effort.
It's, and I was very interested. I found it really.
There's a lot of energy in this. Great. I, I think just a general comment though, is that this cries out for an executive summary.
I have a space for that. I'm sure I was like, we don't usually put those in SHM reports, but okay.
I, I think it could really be useful, and I think it would be useful for a couple of reasons based on what Chris just said. Is that there, I think we could put the emphasis on the messages that we're trying to get out to the public. And one of the messages is, do we have enough parking for STRs? And do we have enough parking for potential build out of ADUs? And so with a little bit of focus, perhaps in the, in executive summary, along with whatever else you want to put in there, but I think there's a lot of data here and, um, you know, I think it would just benefit from having a summary where people could just go and really get the messages really articulated right up front. But yeah, this is great. Thank you very much.
I think that we go a long way.
Oh, one, one other comment I'm sorry, I wanted to make in, I was really disappointed that we didn't get uh, participate in the walkability surveys with
Dan, Dan Berman?
Yeah, I think it was Berman. Um, I think that would have been a really great thing for Trinidad. And I, I know there was probably a lot of reasons why not, but if he is available again, uh, I think we would really benefit from those, those kinds of surveys. Because he he built a campus and did interesting things in Blue Lake. The campaign, so.
Well, we did, we, we, gosh, that was probably been at least 10 years, but we did have someone. We had someone in our office for a while that did walkability assessments and he did one in Trinidad. I don't know. I mean, I don't know his full background. He was English. I don't, you know, their roads are a little different, but, um, but yeah, I mean, he certainly, and, and things have changed obviously in Trinidad, um, you know, projects. But yeah, I mean, and I, you know, I think the entrance to town is one of the the major points of conflict that were identified in there. But if you're interested in that, I can dig it, dig it up.
See how relevant I still.
All right. Unless there's anything prior to packet page 30 where it kind of gets into the meat and the text. The acronyms, that was nice to see in ports when I have public and the list and all those things will get kind of tell you that. But anything on, I guess it's page one of the actual report or page two? Let's start with those. Page one. Page two. You have a question?
You had a question for us, Trevor, about including the sample traffic form as part of an appendix. And um, as I'm reading my comment here, yes, I think that's a good thing to have so folks can see. Um. And I don't know the, if there's a way to kind of simplify it for the end user um to kind of have like an appendix that just has kind of you know, a subappendix, if you will, just like the raw data, kind of those things. That way if somebody wants that level of detail, they can, it's in here, but if you don't need it, you don't have to go to them, if that makes any sense at all. Um, or it's cleaner to.
Um.
Still to think about.
Yeah. Exactly. And do you like, so the parking count form is on fifty seven and fifty eight of the packet. And so one, I gave you both the sort of raw entry form, but then also the next page was the key for data entry. So these are how the, the boxes were grouped for data entry and then translated to, you know, figure one. Um, so those numbers and letters, which version of the form?
I mean, personally, just an example of one of them, I think, is the, the raw data one. You know, how the sausage was made after that point is, I think, is interesting.
And do you want, do you want all six pages or just an example like this?
Firstly, I think an example would be. It's new. And I assume somewhere the, the raw forms, the, the packet of everything that is used will live on in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Right? So should somebody want it, they can certainly get it. Did they also have thoughts on that? Think might as well. I don't know this. Will be looking for it, but if someone has, then there's.
Yeah, I mean, there's, in general, I would lean towards including too much data than too little. Um, but then sometimes, you know, like the, the, the real raw data would be pretty confusing. Um, but even the inventory, the way it is, is maybe bring up more questions than answers. I, I don't know, so um, so yeah, that's why I'm looking personally.
Anything else on page two?
Yeah, uh, it's sort of mentioned a little bit later, but I think it would be nice to report the response rates of the various surveys. That information is available on your fingertips.
Okay.
I know because I personally didn't return my resident survey, sorry. Um, but uh, it certainly wasn't a hundred percent, you know, which is clear. The values you do report later.
Page three. That's on TP two and bust ups fire hydrants. To figure two. First, right there. My, my first thought on that was um, figure two is really data rich already. Uh, I'm not opposed to including that type of information. And I think we get to some record discussion later, which should be co-located with hydrants as well. So I'd be, I think I have some notes if I remember in the packet later on on that, but I would suggest maybe.
Yeah.
Do an additional figure.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I thought about trying to show red curves, but again, I don't have ex, you know, my measurements are not necessarily exact, so I was hesitant to, you know, put that in. Um, instead, so to say. Um, plus, you know, between the stormwater project and the pedestrian project, um. But yeah, I don't know. Yeah, other than red curves, I'm not sure those really. Um, but how about, there's the, there's the inventory appendix question. So I gave you Underwood as an example. Packet P sixty three. That's kind of, and Underwood's a cleaner one than some of the others. Um, you know, one of my hesitations is a lot of these encroachments are difficult to categorize. And so, you know, someone's going to come in and say, well, you categorized this wrong. And, you know, it's not perfect. But it was, you know, sort of the, the best I could do to try and simplify it.
Talking about. And so I, I don't know, you know, there, there has to be some sort of available, what's the word? Not availability factor, but a factor that says that's more difficult to get to than other parking spaces in. And what I'm referring to is a sign that says, I can't remember exactly what it says, but says something to the effect that uh, no turnaround, uh, no.
Outlet.
No outlet.
Yeah.
And I even get a little nervous going down there, you know?
I mean, just to make up some, again, there is no close sack at the end of Underwood, right? So it's literally a three-point turn.
Well, you have to turn around if someone's driving.
Exactly, yeah. But there is trail access.
There is a trail. Yeah.
Across street, right?
And, you know, that property, um, that big property there or the trail, north of the trail. Um, they will, it's actually three parcels. Um, they're going to come in for a lot of adjustments.
Right, missed all the stakes there. Okay, I figured something.
Um, the, the city, you know, could potentially you know, require some kind of easement for at least a turnaround um there. Um, so that people could use the trail or, or the city could sign it for overflow parking on busy days or something um without making people turn around.
Definitely something to consider.
Yeah.
In the future, yeah. And also, also want to approach some of that street receive deliveries from flatbed trucks or box trucks, you know, those trucks have to back the whole way down the street.
I think there is some lady that's discouraging to turn around under, but definitely, yeah, there's no doubt. Trail, trail heads down.
But as far as the inventory, you know, being appendix. As long as there's, for me, I don't have a strong opinion whether or not it's physically here, as long as there's a note in here saying, you know.
It's an example file.
And then the rest are on file, please contact to obtain. So that way if somebody wants it, they know right where to get it, you know? And then, um, if we're going to keep, for example, that packet page, what was it, fifty seven, or no, fifty eight? Or no, sixty three, sorry. The Underwood example, um, you know, maybe just putting, you know, like a watermark across saying sample. You know, and then with a note on that page as well, perhaps saying detail, you know, gory detail, but by contacting Trevor Carter. The data, the data house clear out there. Uh, that'd be my suggestion. It would also then limit the size of the packet that we're going to have to print and have available and store somewhere for. You know.
Yeah. How many of those inventory pages are there?
Um, I, let's see, so Underwood is just this one page, and then I, there's a group by north, south. Um, and they're probably four or five pages each. So ten, ten um portrait um oriented pages plus this one landscape.
I don't think we need all of those. All right, anything else on uh page three of the traffic study? Parking study, excuse me. Moving on to page four. Uh, your first question, kind of a, a general thing. And this might be something that could go in the executive summary. As I understood your question, Trevor, you're kind of asking, there've been some things that have changed since you took the survey, right? Since you collected the data and my opinion is, I, I feel like it would be a good idea to have it kind of static. Have everything reflect the way it was when the survey was conducted, kind of as far as the report. And there'd be an opportunity to speak to changes in a separate section, just to really keep things clear. Because otherwise, you know, you'll read something, go away, you know? Um.
Yeah, and so that, you know, that's figure, cause I, I have things have. Um.
In figure two, I'll call myself out here, and it looks that I have um landscaping as the if I'm looking.
Well, that's, that's the current.
Right? But not what it was when you did this.
What it was, the signage, it would have been more, right?
So.
Yeah.
If that was affecting the study results, I feel like.
Yes, actually, because I don't think I counted those as, because I don't think I counted those as parking spots.
Right, I, I just.
Yeah.
Kind of generally speaking.
Or, or like the cherry trees that were removed on the north end of the ocean. There's still a bank there, but you could probably park there now.
Yes, we will do it, yeah.
Yeah, and where I didn't count those as parking spots, cherry trees. So yeah, it's been. Um. So yeah, and then at what point in time, because we did this over two years, so in the middle of the study, at the end of the study? Um.
Maybe conditions at the end of the study, I, I don't, yeah, at the end of the study or the.
At least I. Probably they should reflect, really what they should, they should reflect what was counted as parking spots.
The, the collection forms didn't change during the course of the study, right?
No, and I had to, you know, when I, when calculating percentages of utilization, I had to pick a number of parking spots that were available. Um. So I based that on, you know, count, could someone actually park there? But it did change from one year to next a little bit.
Uh, yeah, that brings up a question or a good point. What do you anticipate that the change is? I don't know, a percentage of viability or number, maybe numbers of that area I'm looking at?
I mean, certainly, uh, when I did the Trinity Street project, they were pretty careful about keeping the number of parking spots the same. It was, the, those commissions made it pretty clear that if we're taking away parking spots, we, although I think what was going to be a parking spot at the Eater, it ended up not being a parking spot. But um, but otherwise, it was mostly encroachments. The stormwater project removed a couple of encroachments. Um. Walkalando one on Underwood. It's like the cherry trees.
So it, it sounds like if anything, it may be going up.
Probably the number of spots went up, yes. Yeah. Oh, and um, Ewing too, they cleared some vegetation with that, now there's one.
Well, it's more, I guess, just to understand.
Yeah.
I know we have to just pick a point.
You have to pick a point and then I need to explain it.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the beginning of the study, since that's, the forms didn't change where the data was collected. So, I mean, any artifact limitation would have been maintained throughout the length of the study, right?
Yeah.
And then you could explain other stuff.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I'll have to look though, again, like how I, I wanted to match up with how I counted parking spots because I might have changed how I entered all the data and did the calculations. That was the end of the study and that's when I counted the parking spot.
So because the number of parking spots may have modestly increased. Yes, we choose that point in time, there is some point in time when we are attempting to overestimate utilization, is that true?
Yes.
So I think that's like a sort of worst case.
Yeah.
Sort of situation.
Yeah.
So there's another message for that.
So yeah, uh, was the explanation in the text clear in terms of how the number of spaces in the gravel parking lot was calculated? Do you think this?
I thought it was, you have a picture also that kind of showed the overlay, right?
Yes.
I do, I do have a question about that, which is the significant amount of that parking lot was historically flooded in the winter, rather than there's large puddles there. I don't know that it's a problem anymore.
No, um, that was re, well, it was regraded and repaired as part of the city's.
But were those, were those flooded spots? Available spots?
Well, I mean, this is really just an exercise in how you estimate. I mean, that's part of why there is more than a hundred percent, because people park willy nilly all over. I mean, it's, and up and down edges of the, you know, they park everywhere.
Perfect, there's the.
Yeah, they, yeah, so it's really, um. It's just an estimate.
Uh, sorry.
Uh, just a couple of comments while we're still on that uh. It's uh, we're on page fifty nine. Uh, yeah, I, um, the, the little proposed gravel lot parking lot layout kind of confused me at first. I, I was looking at it from the standpoint of looking at it from the ground level, so these cars were all below ground. So if there's another way of perhaps uh looking at that, uh, that would be useful to me. Now, maybe it's just my perception, but it's just, first of all.
See that, yeah, yeah.
Oh, why are the.
Suppose, we're going to dig it, we're going to.
Yeah, right. I think you have on page sixty, Autumn is more. Easy to understand. Oh, better.
More better, yeah.
Kind of represents, you know, the red at the top there kind of represents.
And maybe that's all it needs. Maybe that plus. Maybe just that page.
I guess I don't think the figure at the bottom of fifty nine adds anything more than uh sixty.
Certainly, certainly none of your calculation uh at the top there, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't, yeah, because I too look at that. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, honestly, if you just like eliminated the, the black bars on top of the cars and maybe flip the labels to the bottom.
Uh, I mean, there's a way to change it, sure, right? Just the way it is right now. Yeah. And then I, then I have a, another question. Um, and I know we talk a lot about parking is very influenced by the season. And when you look at uh the parking lot that we were just referring to on page fifty nine and sixty and then the uh Rancheria parking lot as well. Um, there's an awful lot of crab pots that wind up. Taking lots of spaces and um, it wasn't clear to me, you, you mentioned, you know, you mentioned here maybe there's a lot of parking spaces uh support, but and, and it says operates the harbor facility, store, stores moorings, yeah, that, that's a big deal every year, such as crab pots, et cetera. So it wasn't clear to me how we accounted for that in, in the report.
Well, we didn't really do parking counts during that time period.
Yeah, and that's what I was kind of wondering. Um. Yeah, the, the concern I would have is that I bet we lose well, not only that whole row, but the whole would be, that would be the north end of the Rancheria's parking lot uh for weeks at a time when the crab pots are there. And so I don't know how to account for that, you know, off the top of my head, but I, I somehow, I think it's something we we should address still now.
Um, anecdotally, do you, I mean, probably there's an influx of people during the holidays. Um, but do you, I, and I don't know if there's any kind of events down there during the winter, but do you notice parking issue down there?
Probably not anecdotally, but at the same time. I don't know, I, I just want to make sure that we at least address it somehow, even if we. Say this, some sort of waiver on, on the number of spots down there.
Yeah.
There is, you know, need for moorings and crab pots, et cetera.
Maybe a secondary sentence after that, just saying that, you know, the impact of this. You know, is unknown or.
Yeah, wasn't, yeah, wasn't.
Wasn't, wasn't this, this survey? Anything else on page four? Page five?
Just curious, why, why did you think that there were so many anonymous responses?
The businesses?
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't get a ton of responses, but maybe, maybe employees didn't want to identify their employer.
Employees that.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's handed out to employees.
I, okay.
And, and managers, but.
I got it now, okay.
Right, page thirty five, um. I was really disappointed just to, I mean. The, the absolute dearth of visitor survey responses and I understand, but I really appreciate the sensitivity to the litter. Um, you know, if we ever do a survey, but again, just. For, I'll just say it out loud so we all hear it, but maybe somebody running around with an iPad that they can just click on a survey and saying, hey, welcome to Trinidad. Could we, do you got time for a thirty second survey?
Or assign with a QR code.
Just, just something here.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm just, I was trying to think of a way to, because visitors don't come into City Hall terribly much.
No, we were.
And then the three vocal visitors that did are, are regular visitors. So what's the definition? Are they somebody that comes from tennis court regularly, you know?
Yeah, that was something we never, we brainstormed a little bit and never figured out a good solution. Sort of someone walking around and handing, handing out surveys, but then those would get tossed too, so.
I don't know, it just popped into my head. I mean, nothing.
Yeah.
Is what it is at this point. I have any else on page thirty five?
So I, I just wanted to make sure I got the numbers right and the paragraph that's labeled resident survey. That in line says the response was relatively large with forty nine people responding. Then down under item three, it says out of fifty two residents. So are, are those supposed to be two different numbers or is it just? The same residents? The numbers just don't jive?
That's a good question. Maybe some of this was tallied before all the responses. Well, let's see, well. Although not everyone submitted comments, but. Forty nine that submitted. All the surveys, but I will check that.
It did just pop out to me that there's a difference of three. I don't know, could the visitor surveys have been somehow? I don't think.
I'd say red, um.
I'm just thinking the data was getting tabulated. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I will check those numbers.
Page seven. I, I absolutely would like to see the public comments in there.
I can't, that's my, that's actually probably my favorite.
You know, I was thinking of reading and I saw my comment in there and I felt very validating, like, hey, my survey was red, right? Uh, so I think that's important for people to see that, make the effort. Here's a chance where they can see. Yeah, and it wasn't redacted, it wasn't summarized. It's like here, you know, unless there's some course.
I think some were somewhat, well, there is, there is, I think, one that says he wrote a book, see survey.
Okay. But anyway, so I would just advocate to kind of your two TP six and, and seven, I think, yeah. You know, and even, you know, to the, the question of overnight, I know overnight parking is a concern for a lot of people or for some folks, and we hear that concern frequently. Is how I'll phrase that. I think, you know, including that would be important too, again, just for capturing the commentary and, you know, validating people's effort. That's all I have on that page.
Yeah, definitely, you know, and it's. This study has, you know, is maybe, you know. Look at my own neighborhood more closely in terms of parking patterns and, yeah, a lot of it has to do with who your neighbors are.
Right, moving on to page eight.
So I, I, I do recall, must have been last year, back somewhere, I've got photographs of dozens, not sure if you can say dozens, but lots of RVs parked on. How have we solved that? Or have we?
You know, it's interesting. I didn't see, well, I didn't see the overnight. I didn't see, um, overnight, um. Hardly at all, um. And, you know, obviously there are a number of comments that have to do with that. It's just not something that, I mean, we didn't record RVs specifically, but I, you know. I noted them and I just didn't see that many RVs. I think. I think the one year, um. I think there were a couple of years, the, the big fire years with the campfire and, and some of those, and then it led into COVID, but there were so many fire evacuees that one year where there were all the complaints about RVs and people camping in Trinidad. And that seems to be when it started, um, and we know a lot of those folks were, were fire evacuees. You know, the, the whole labor, there was a big, and then they didn't, oh, and I know. Um, I, I remember. So it was that Labor Day weekend and they had just repaged Edwards and they hadn't painted the white stripe. So the RVs were parked. All cars and RVs were parked all up and down the south side of.
Yeah.
On that Labor Day weekend.
Right, right. Okay, so. Just wondered if we did anything overtly to.
I, you know. I know some people are going to be upset at this study, um, because we just didn't find the problems, but, you know, the, and we have talked to the coastal commission about overnight parking. Um, it was fine to do, I guess, on Main Street, that's outside the appealable area, um. If, to do it on Edwards, they want significant documentation that it's a problem. And, you know. And they want it, they want it limited as much as possible. So like no parking from. Midnight to. Five or four, you know, because someone might wanna, because they don't want to keep people from taking a full midnight, night walk on the beach. Um, or somebody wants to get up at four AM and dig for clams, you know, whatever it is, um, you know, they want to make sure that kind of thing is not unduly restricted.
Yeah, it just goes back to my comment earlier about the message that we need to send in the executive summary and that would be probably something just to. Control, just. That a lot of, a lot of the requirements are driven by the coastal commission.
The other thing I'd just add anecdotally, um, you know, I get a, a lot of mornings I'm in town and just walk down to the bluff of the cup and coffee and just, you know, look, look, overlook. Um, and very frequently, um, vehicles that I saw there the night before, when I would go out and walk the dog or something, were gone because they tend to get on the road earlier. Um, so depending upon what time the survey was conducted, if they weren't packed up and moved on to their next destination, not to be captured even though they were there earlier, you wouldn't know. Um, we did have a couple, uh, two years ago. Folks that were. You know, probably fell into the, the houseless, uh, category where, where, you know, full-time residents and, um. Totally members of the community were, um. On top of communicating with the sheriff's department and, and the sheriff's department, my understanding, you know, did actually. At least enforce the seventy-two hour parking rule. They were asked to do that on several occasions, uh, because some of those folks became problematic. Um, also, I think that the, the, that was my impression of this last season, that I think the trend for the van life. Going through seems to have perhaps waned a little bit.
Well, I think for a lot of the recent struggles.
Yeah. People having to go back to work, right? So they're no longer able to work remotely. A lot of those things are.
A good time to buy them.
Right, yeah. Bad time to sell, right? Is the, you mentioned it, is the seventy-two hour rule referenced anywhere in the reports?
I'm not.
I'll say yes. I don't know exactly where we go, but.
Well, I did, somewhere I talked about some of the parking regulations.
Think of the strategies, is that?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, and there's a little bit of discussion about enforcement.
Yeah.
Yes, apparently, um. Strategies.
Just for, you mentioned people would be unhappy, but, um. There's already a, a lot where it precludes long duration stays.
And that's pretty standard, um, it's that three day.
All right. The crossing. Unproven place to. It's executive summary, it's been longer and longer.
Better use of summary for this, right?
Yeah, all right, uh, moving on page nine, I think we would have two. Um, one of the counters on Father's Day, isn't it? Father's Day has directly been like Fish Festival slash whatever.
Yes, yeah. Would have interested to partner counter in Fish Fest. We, we do have an aerial photo. We did, we did take an aerial photo during Fish Fest.
Yeah, my question was, so that was, the survey was not completed during the Fish Fest?
Yeah, no, there was no Fish Fest now, because Fish Fest hasn't been since, since COVID.
I can't think, the name just came, it got done at school, I think, once or twice now. There was a, an event there.
Yeah, um, but yeah, I think COVID, I mean, COVID was probably the.
A lot, I think a lot of people did to go for that too, to come through.
Yeah, it's a duck smaller and smaller, but yeah, now the Fish Fest was. Was, yeah, it was a big deal. And that was the, you know, the day after Oyster Fest. Yeah, it was a zoo.
Was any data collected on Clam Beach Run Day? Those or would that have been outside of what January, January, February?
No, but I, I think, uh.
We all know the impact on the.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that is. And, and maybe, because I wasn't, I wasn't always aware of events necessarily, but I know like the, the surf or no, the, um, lifeguard thing, there's a surf, there's a surf competition now. Lifeguard, so there's things like that. There's, were clearly some HSU events at the, at the Marine Lab. Um, so definitely, there was a day I came for, oh, graduation, um. For the, the school.
Yeah.
Um, that was a big one.
Yeah.
Um, so there was definitely.
Race.
Events. Are, are big drivers of the, of the peak parking rates. Sure.
The question was more about data analysis than like. Just using the overall trend, yeah, so he's got lots of parking.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's those specific. Kind of events. And then, and then when you get a holiday that coincides with nice weather too, I think it's, uh.
It's like a nice weather. First sunny day in a long time, which definitely big influx of. Each parking. Right, page ten. Uh, I just had a observation, I think in the text where it says Thursday and fifty-nine point two on Sunday, that probably should read fifty-nine point four at the top of the page. Peak is fifty-nine point four on Sunday, according to the graphics, but on the.
Yeah.
Nothing else jumped out at me. This is the, uh, pedantic college instructor interview, but let's see, like some standard deviation, there's standard error bars there, just to.
I mean, do statistics?
No, I specifically did not want you to do that. I made a pee belly area, maybe I just wanted to sort of see how deterioration or was.
Does Excel do that easily?
Oh, yeah.
They do, it does, huh? Okay.
Yeah.
Like so for the data altogether, okay.
Just because I mean, some of those, some of those mean differences may not, might be a lot of variability there that might. You can't just compare things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I realize that your time is finite, so I don't need it, but it would be interesting to see. They would improve overall, I'll be fair, I guess. Okay, page eleven. The same thing applies to all of the graphs. Page twelve.
I, I guess not, no, I was just looking at the last sentence of the page and. There's. Not relative to this.
Yeah. I'm just regarding your TP eight there, Trevor, um. I don't know that a figure with that information would be necessarily terribly meaningful. To be anyway, I mean, I, it's here. Elsewhere, you know. With one less, you know, standard deviation.
One less.
Right, yeah, exactly. You don't have to select all.
I guess it would be, I mean, I. I kind of like the idea of it, but it is one point in time, which is one disadvantage of it. Um, so it could be heavily impacted by some sort of event that might have been going on. I think it's, so probably the harbor is a big one there, um. Kind of the reason why I like the idea of it is. You know, these, there's these averages and then there's this peak one, but this peak is. You know, throughout the entire study. So this kind of presents a little bit of a skewed view, um. Which is why I thought that the, the one point in time figure might be helpful.
I don't, I don't really know that it. Jinx too much to the area of, I like being out there, there's times and dates that are busy. There's locations that are going to be busier and, you know, yeah, I think the relative is very, I'm not sure. That would be twelve, graph is this. Right, page thirteen. Just to your TP nine, I felt like in that paragraph already existed an explanation of why sometimes there's potential for an overcount, so I think. Anything else was, I mean, I.
Yeah, there's, there's several other examples as well, where you. Mission, how did it happen?
So I, I guess I have a couple of thoughts on the, the loaded paragraph. Does the city of Trinidad have a parking problem? I think most, most I think are going to go to. Um, and, and the first comment was, I think it's the second sentence that begins as is evident, um. Contributes to the perception that there is a parking problem. I felt like, not that that sentence wasn't long enough, but, uh, uh, maybe something else adding in or areas of concentrated use compared to other areas of town. You know, I could perceive that I have a parking problem given my proximity to the mall in town, right? Sardis Plaza. But that's relative for me, based off where I live, you, you know, and wouldn't necessarily reflect the overall thing. Um.
Well, and I think it probably kind of, it kind of dismisses people's. Concerns maybe a little bit.
At least acknowledges that, you know, I mean, people that live near intersections, you know, the. At least acknowledges that, you know, I mean, people that live near intersections, you know, the where businesses are going to see heavier traffic because those businesses have to have. You know, if they're preexisting and their parking requirements are different for, you know, than a new business going to that same location would be. Then just another general question, the criteria for red zones, green zones, I I started trying to look through the code, the municipal code. And really couldn't find a whole lot of guidance.
Yeah.
I'm like, well, I want one in front of here. I I want one there. More observation, I guess, than anything else.
Yes, so well, yeah, it was one of the surprising things is the inconsistency in the red curves. You know, there's a standard for intersections and crosswalks, but not.
Yeah, that's right.
But even it, but even you know, it's inconsistent. You know, or curves, what do you do on a curve? And I guess that's sort of, some of it's up to the city engineer. Some of it's just public works out there with a paint can. But the city has, you know, one of the things I've noticed in my time here is the city has painted a lot more red curves. Where, and again, always people, you know, attending to complain about people parking in front of their house or in a narrow location. And, you know, I think again, the the city just painted red curb in the past where now the coastal commissions made it very clear that if we paint red curb and there's parking spots, that's development. We're still butting heads over the twenty minute zone. Here, because they want a C D P and it's just. Anyway.
Yeah. That one too. That's a big stretch of available.
That's a big stretch. And it was a big discussion at the council meeting.
Well, and and even the previous owner, it was, it was a matter of the squeaky wheel gets the grease. He made it very clear that that had to be a no park zone. At that time, there was no parking at all. It was a.
A lot there.
Yeah.
Part, well, part of it still is.
Yeah, but there was.
Yeah.
Again, I think that's just kind of more general. I don't know if that's it.
So, well, that's one of the recommendations is to have some stand, you know, have some standards for this company.
Yeah, that's why. That's what we just got to do it.
Yeah, or, you know, the twenty minute spots here and the, there's an A D A, you know, there's. And I don't know who likes those decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, other jurisdictions might be beneficial to look and see what they do. Is it ordinances, policies?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe it goes beyond red curves, but other other curves.
I think, for me, it goes, I mean, any kind of restriction, any kind of modification beyond the seventy two hour, because that's really kind of the only thing. You know, that talks, like I said, there's those few things in the municipal code about you know, driveways and fire hydrants and for for red striping, but.
He would be a good, he is a good resource and we've. Anton has mentioned that Josh will be at the next city council meeting. I think maybe talking about the striping and the new crosswalks on Edwards and things like that. And I know there's been still, you know, between Eli and Josh, there's been some conversations about some of the traffic calming and things that had been discussed as well.
Being, you know, best practices kind of for that.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I think because I think a lot of these discussions are, it's becoming sort of squeaky wheel kind of thing, but it's also okay, last year it was the stop sign here and, you know, now it's, and I mean, the city council ten years ago would never have a stop sign there. Yeah, yeah, I I was so surprised when they went in. But yeah, it's just like jumping from one thing, oh, yeah, without a, well, let's why are we doing this? And how does it fit into the bigger, the bigger context? Yeah.
I I do feel compelled to add about this. There are some curves, there are some red stripe sections, which probably ought to be longer, you know, almost two months a day. So less than thirty, I picked up this packet, right? So there's a I I would caution against like just offering up removal of red striped areas as a possibility, but in reality there might be some areas that would need to be elongated. And now we've got this parking survey. If it does require a C D P or whatever, you can use this parking survey to say, hey, we've actually got plenty of parking. Let's, let's ensure traffic safety, let's ensure pedestrian safety. Got to spend so long here and jump through some hoops to do it. Got anything that says we should be able to?
Yes, and I, and I think part of that is not having curves in so many areas.
And I think it is worthwhile to to dive into what determines whether there should be an ADA parking spot or not. If the goal is again to ensure coastal access, sure access more generally. Probably wouldn't hurt to have a few more ADA spots around here. Again, because we've got this large pool of available parking. Let's use that information to ensure better access.
I think they'd have an ADA spot in the act, they have one or two ADA spots in the actual parking. The city used to have one on the street here, right?
There's a lot of task force now. Is it for the Red Cavalry? Is there one there still?
Say what?
Someone by the Red Cavalry.
When it's stated. It's court. Actually, there's.
Murphy's has. Well, and there's no, you know, another thing that we've that's come up at planning commission meetings is there's no bike parking. Want to encourage people to park, you know, over there and walk.
Listen, didn't we have a grant project where we identified locations where we thought they should go?
I think that might have been in the general plan update we talked about.
Just general plan, there's no funding.
The city had a, had a grant many, many years ago to put some in. But nothing recently.
They will continue to beat the dead horse, but if there's a lot of available parking and, you know, there's the possibility of adding bike lanes. Getting bike lanes at the expense of this plentiful parking.
I mean, I.
Appreciate the fire.
Emirates really needs a sidewalk.
Anything else on lucky thirteen? Moving on to fourteen.
And, you know, anything like anything you want specifically, you know, discussed or, you know, recommendations you have. You know, they can certainly go into general plan policies and recommendations, but if there's, you know, some of the things you're talking about, that's the kind of thing I want to see, you know. Based on this information, what are your conclusions? What do you want to see?
I would just, well, we kind of just said it, but there needs to be a a striping survey of all varieties in town. Check out what we have and see if we can find out why they're there and are they even you know, adequate or inadequate, right?
Yeah.
Just my brain. So now the different strategies. Page fourteen. I wholeheartedly agree, but I'm concerned about unfortunately, property owners themselves have an industry that checked it to be a small portion. That's just more due to public opposition. A little less.
Yeah. Yeah. Where, where, let's see.
Take the fourth minute from the bottom. Fortunately, property owners on the south side of the street.
There's a horse foot. Which is why I might have been a little sarcastic because it was a foot. And that's a sixty foot right away. So it's like, the city owns like sixteen feet of their front yard and we only have a foot. Anyway.
So then we also hope Trinity by sunset that strong agent, agent want to organize.
Well, I think it was also people didn't, they wanted the trail fixed. And so they saw the sidewalk as
Yeah.
Death of the trail. To you. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of things going.
Just a comment, I mean, our general plan speaks to, you know, the preference not to have sidewalks on some streets, right?
Yeah.
Elements, right?
For for local streets, yeah. But Edwards isn't a whole.
No, yeah, it's not. Same argument can be made, cars been used as the bypass from the busier streets. All right. Page fifteen.
I'm not to. I just had a comment, I'm sorry. That would change real fast. So, you know, we talk about this is a little confusing to me. We talk about Edward Street. And then as we transition over to page fifteen, we talk about other streets, no, with Trinity, Hector, so forth and so on. And yet we make a big point of showing information on Underwood. It's not even mentioned. Now, is there a reason for that or am I?
Do you mean in the local streets discussion or?
Well, we start with Edwards. And then the, the, and there's quite a bit of information about Edwards. That's on fourteen and on fifteen. Just local streets, we talk about as examples, I realize Kalindo and Van Wick. But in the packet here, in the parking study, we have the page for Underwood.
Oh.
So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
I I realize maybe they're two different subjects, but how do we tie those two together, two issues together? Or don't?
Yeah, I only use Underwood as the example because it's the one that fit on one page.
Okay. Okay.
So there is, it's a disconnect.
Yeah, I got it. I just.
And, you know, like our discussion earlier, Underwood is underutilized. And so, you know, particularly during events or something, it might be worthwhile to direct cars there, but without a turnaround or an outlet, it's, it's not really best place to direct.
Which is just directly to Waverly Street. It's all about parking.
On fifteen, I had just a comment that I feel like this might have been addressed later, I will say that because I can deep into this again. When you talk about local streets. There's also on the local streets, a lot of private parking places that are heavily utilized that impact whether or not cars are present on the local street. I could think of, you know, the field behind Saunders, the Parker Creek Trail Park. Parking to Old Home Beach that goes on there is substantial at times. Both is.
Yes.
Some attribute back to the large occupancy down there that can hold multiple vehicles, but I also believe that beach is a huge draw for people. And I see a lot of people unloading their vehicle down there. So my, my point was just that I don't know how we kind of addressed that the school parking lot, you know, eats up a lot of stuff for beachcomber. I know it was kind of included in the survey, but, you know. If those, if those places were to suddenly decide, no, we don't want these open, if the school were to fence off or Saunders or excuse me, Murphy's lot were developed into something else and it no longer became available, that was, that's going to push traffic onto the local streets. So that was kind of the gist of my comment there.
Yes, and I have definitely noted that with the, I think with right behind Murphy's, where I think a number of them.
I mean, that's Murphy's lot as well.
Yeah, that's part of that. But I have wondered about Parker Creek Drive.
Parker Creek Drive itself, I don't, there's not a lot of room for parking on the actual.
It's, it's.
There, that back corner of the lot there closest.
Yeah.
You know, where it makes that ninety almost and goes down the slope.
Well, you know, one of my you, this study is, you know, made me think about, you know, well, when that lot is developed, should the city require dedication of right of way there? Because it's, it is pretty narrow.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that in one of the.
And so, yeah, that is one, that is, that's something that came up in my mind. But yeah, I I didn't, I didn't talk about how a lot of those cars park perpendicular in there unless that's on credit.
Advocate any parking going away, but if and when it could, because that's probably, it could be developed for a school that had a need to restrict the parking in their lot. Those, those people go elsewhere. I have fifteen, I've got one more point, maybe on page fifteen, which is that you mentioned Hector Street. And it's, it's no Fish Fest, but there is mass at that church somewhere between one and four times a month. And it doesn't seem, it's not like, it's not on anybody's radar, right? Like it didn't appear on this list of of congested areas. And I think that's probably due to the fact that they utilize a lot of that official perpendicular parking. So it's just that sort of case study of how using some of that available parking or sector, we can believe the perception that there's a park. Is that a city owned lot, that vacant lot kind of on the?
No, but no, but it's there is room in the right of way to do.
I was just curious if the lot belongs.
And I, I think I think Eli and Josh have been talking about that actually in design. That's, that's been talked about for a long time.
Sixteen. It's headed, it was unclear to me, the second one at the top considers specifically designated areas for RVs to park. Is that a suggestion that like, hey, if you have an RV and you want to park over in our town, here's the street we are on to do it? So what was the intent behind that?
Yes. Or at least directing them to appropriate locations.
My thought on that is I doubt anybody will support anywhere near anybody's home as being an appropriate location.
No, it'd probably be Harbor or, and how do they access Trails or Murphy's or?
Right.
There isn't any designated RV parking in the Caltrans spots, is there?
There's another ADA.
Is that possible to designate?
There's probably space there.
There are technically ride share lots, aren't there? I know that.
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what Caltrans would think of that. I mean, people do park their RVs there, I've seen.
Oh, yeah.
They're well too. But those ride share lots are underutilized.
Yes, yes, they are. So.
I, I guess I.
Well, it is, I think, a good consideration.
A good consideration, yeah, and maybe just maybe flush it out a little bit more, just so that way they're, you know, located in a central spot. You know, instead of willy nilly throughout town. Which is, you know, currently what they end up being now. Holdouts question, you're talking about those ones, those are the ones up on.
Yeah, I wasn't sure where to, they take, they've taken up quite a bit of parking in the years, so the holdouts. And there were some complaints about that in the comments. I wasn't sure where to put them in the report or if to really put them in the report.
Was it just on main? Yeah, I'm trying, where else are they other than main? Was it just on main? Yeah, I'm trying, where else are they other than main?
Trinity. I mean, main, I mean. Trinity and school, yeah.
Well, just the crosswalk on Trinity, right? Just looking at Google.
But there's been, there keeps, there continues to be discussion about more Bowlbouts. And the city's never gone through a permit process for the loss of parking from those, which I think we recognize now we would have to do. So maybe that's just have to go through a process. Yeah, I wasn't sure where to get it.
It would be under a strategy.
No. Maybe it's just part of the intro and history that Bowlbouts are one of them that's taken out.
Can I ask Trevor about the numbering of the strategies? Like do do you prepare a plan strategy number one or a strategy number five?
You know, there was actually a table that that I did, I did put them in kind of that priority order. And I, I think I had a sentence in here that said, in order of recommended priority, but I wasn't sure I wanted to make that recommendation. Um, but if you guys do and you want me to say that or reorder them, um, that would be fine.
Basically, I feel public input, an opportunity for public input on the strategies, once we get this beyond the draft phase would be critical.
And maybe that's what it says, that these are not prioritized with that public comment.
Right. But the intent is to have public input to help prioritize the strategies. Also on sixteen, just relative to strategy number two overall, I'd suggest the strategy incorporate, uh, consider um restricted parking inventory and analyze, you know, but not, not limit it to just red curves. You know, you know, anything. Um. Having done. And, and maybe that would be an appropriate place for Bowlbouts now that I think about it, it's just kind of a restricted. Park there. Yeah, obviously I don't want to see three trees, three more trees cut down. Um, but that's several things. So I, it just may enlarge the scope of that would be my suggestion. But also, we're at this point that in addition to regarding potential for a reduction of renewable, perhaps rationale for expanding or elongating. Which the flow chart does a nice it starts to get that, that you got at the back there, but it never addresses potential expansion.
Yeah.
Just. I do think that just to that point, yeah, the flow chart is useful, but modifying that to somehow incorporate the concept of you know, again, enlarging it to all colored curves and then just the appropriate edition sizing of directions to accomplish the goal, right?
Yeah, just changing. Not, not just red curve, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Not just shrinking, but modifying.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's worth shrinking. Should the, the curve length be modified or it can't be to achieve the same purpose? Or it doesn't need to be something along those lines? Page seventeen, how about page seventeen? Page eighteen. Um, the fourth bullet point you have there in the program for reducing encroachments, prioritization of encroachments based on parking utilization areas. I'd like to add more potential reuse based on proximity to trails and whatnot. Because it might be something that makes sense to try and, you know, because I might having the encroachment open on either side of the street there, for example, the end of Underwood might facilitate turning around without having to utilize somebody's driveway, because then you've got that right of way that's open. You know, because there's a stormwater one, that's a beautiful one that's right there now, and that's literally opposite the street from that.
Yeah.
Page nineteen, oh, sorry.
Um, this is just a random thought. I was just looking at this and realized Groth Lane isn't in here.
Well, that, no, well, we didn't do scenic. We didn't do Berry or scenic um as part of the study. Um, but that doesn't mean that they can't be in some of the strategies. I mean, Groth Lane is private.
With an easement for the trail, correct?
Easement for pedestrian access.
And there's, people park there is what I guess in that thing. Both on the, the Groth Lane side and also on the Lanford side.
Yeah. So, yeah, we did not, I mean, if you look at figure one, that just wasn't, we just really did the main part of town. The only thing east of the freeway I did was that parking right, just because I was doing the other parking right.
Okay.
But I mean, that is a coastal access, but I think it's recognized that there's really not. And people park there, but there's not official parking there.
Is there any, I carry it or is it not?
I don't know.
Parts in the, the road that goes around. And you might say that there's one or two parking spots over by the shed. But that's pretty much preserved one. It's not, it's not official.
So there are like services there?
There are. And often cars are parked inside on the road, it's just a ground, and then out onto stagecoach.
Think about that.
Just thinking of other cemeteries and that, I mean, they're larger in scale. So they have more internal roadway capacity to hold the folks, you know, but I feel like that's kind of a common practice to park. And within the. Unfortunately, you can't, there's not a lot of space to pull over. And there was an incident where somebody ran over a headstone and broke it. Alright, anything on eighteen? Anything else? Nineteen?
That is strategy six. Wizard. Well, we'll look at the priorities.
Uh, page twenty. Under your caveat, just I had a marginal here, we've already talked a little about the twenty minute that blocks. You know, coastal commission, just like, that popped into my brain, you know, made it clear that any type of time restriction must be substantially justified. I don't know. I think that'll come if we do that strategy on time with it. Only had was about restricted vehicle parking. Um, I don't know if the title to that, this paragraph seems to be particularly about RVs, just to read that restricted RV parking. Um, or just recreational vehicle parking. For the bold paragraph, because otherwise it doesn't, it doesn't get retouched in any way.
Well, I guess the one, and I wa, I probably was RV parking, but then I added the you know, parking resident, parking pass. So then it wasn't just RVs. Um, I just sort of added that as, because that was some of the con, in some of the comments, and that's another type of restricted vehicle parking. You know, the city whatever implements something for this.
One. Thank you over like building a funicular. So I think you over like building a funicular down to the beach. Then the figures, um, let's go to those here. Figure one. It, it, just a general comment about the figures, and I know we've talked about other figures, but somehow denoting these figures are best viewed in color. Reproduced in color. Um. Once that goes away, all the detail. A lot of the detail, I think, will get lost. Yes, similarly, there are other planning issues as well, I don't know. Just for my success, always. Green and, sorry, I think they're red and blue or okay, it's basically, I forget though, there's some. Anything else on figure one? Um, figure two that, uh, my, my comment on here, I understand, I think what you were trying to do was keeping the green, by the way, it's a green. That there's already existing parking inventory that's slightly, but not really distinctly lighter shade of green, you know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was, I had to work really hard.
Okay.
Lighting to be able to tell what was what. I don't know if patterns, X's, diamonds, Vs. Maybe a better. Um. Process, you know. That gets confusing with your encroachment notes, which are also letters, but I'll leave it to you, but just, I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, I mean, and a lot of this was difficult, like the you know, the one spot there here, the tennis courts, the fire department spot. Technically, it shouldn't count as a parking spot because it's not available to the public. But I knew that if there was a fire truck parking there, it's going to get counted on the parking. Nobody will do that. So that, you know, just even how to count a birdie is where I was sometimes.
What about the, how do you account for the post office vehicle parking? Is that a publicly available parking spot or no?
That, well, I mean, technically, they just, nothing says post office only, does it?
The backside does, but all, there's.
Oh, behind the.
When they repainted that recently, it's worked there in the last year or two.
Well, I, I think this is a good example of not adding policies because I don't think that was done legally. I think they just decided to do.
Is that just their employee parking?
Yeah, that's, but then again, it's a product parking.
It's a, yeah, I.
Rules.
And the cities, and yeah, and the city's parking standards are pretty vague. It just says you have to have so many parking spots per square footage of business, and it doesn't say, it doesn't say you can't designate employee parking or you.
They will turn around and park their mail truck in a public spot.
For the mail trucks, it was parked in the middle of the island, yeah.
Was, was that the reference you made to a vehicle being parked for break-ins? A business, there was some business, I didn't know who that was. Company vehicle they park in town, right? That was the only.
I wonder, I wonder, I don't know.
Figure on the survey, I guess. Um, the other question I had is on Underwood, uh, you know, the section's opposite betrayal there shows green, those to me are very.
I didn't get that updated. Yes. No, there, there are a bunch of uh encroachments missing on.
And yeah, there's vegetation as you go through the arc of the curve, the emperor, you know, okay, cool. But I did, on this, just a thought to Claire, to if you feel it is important to keep it in the eighty, twenty minute loading zones, maybe two A. Figure two A that would have just out and not remove that whole layer of color confusion from this. I don't know.
You need to add eighty, eighty, twenty minutes on a separate sheet.
And red curves, yeah, because there was talk about, you know, we want to see red curves, fire hydrants, that kind of stuff. And if, if that was the desire, maybe, you know, a whole new figure.
I think red curves is, again, I don't feel comfortable in my, how much I met, you know, some of them are like little, and like, where do you start measuring when the curb goes up and like? I don't know if I'd feel comfortable putting my data for red curves. It's pretty close, but in terms of actually putting red curb on a map, I don't know. Although, you can't measure six inches on this.
Well, then I was just going to say, do you feel more comfortable about the green zones, the blue zones you measured than the red, or is it because?
Yeah, I think we're a little more obvious. And again, six inches here, there, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Um, we're on the red curb, six inches here, and there matters. Um. Not that that would show up on the map, but.
I heard the legend, just a little asterisk saying, you know, lengths of
Crossment, yeah.
So on figure, what was that, two? Maybe the figure eight? Same feet for all. You, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, those means, do you have a suggestion? I mean, it's sort of.
Patterns.
Green, okay, the white.
You know, a row of.
Yeah, the thick man said so.
Pound signs and exclamation marks and, you know. To make it look busy, but I, I don't know. Kind of figure. Figure eight, just go with all the colors, coloring issues.
The, the two greens are difficult.
The two greens are very difficult on figure eight. I mean, for there, make one of them blue. Purple or. You know.
Could be blue, probably.
Pretty intuitive.
But you're right. I mean, the greens, you kind of have to compare it to the next, the closest one next to it to, to see. I mean, potentially the twenty to forty could be a lighter green or a more yellow green. We could look at doing blue for less than twenty percent.
Or outline it.
Outline it some, or some sort of pattern. The lines are a little thin maybe for a pattern, but um, that's potential too.
Yeah, I guess. Trying to think of our audience. Um. Large majority of what is complete will be in one.
Screen colors vary.
Screen color vary, that's true. So any hashing that we can do or maybe very useful.
Definitely between greens, but also between the eighty, two hundred percent red and a hundred percent red. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the same scale, but you know, I actually see it in some of those.
Yeah.
Nine or ten? Open up to our streaming patient public, it's been nice. Any, any comments on the parking survey? Park status. Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. I apologize. Real quick. Uh, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Anything on those last points? Yeah. Seems like some of the resident surveys comments got truncated. That sentence.
Okay. Yeah, they did. I, I worked on that a couple of times, but yeah.
It's excels.
Every time you change something, that, yeah.
Um, I guess it's uh, if you can, um, talk about for the uh, the engines and the or, or, is there any need to, the two different colors? I mean, I don't have any problem with that. I just wasn't sure if there was some legend that I was missing.
No.
Okay. I guess the same thing then on page sixteen.
Yeah, I believe I saw you up there for a moment.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, just a couple of questions, and I haven't read the whole thing, so um, thank you for the, the hard work on doing this. Um, I was wondering about parking in alleys. And if that was addressed in.
And if that was addressed in the parking study. Um, I know that several homes, um. That are in the alley be, um, between view and ocean, there's several. Residents who regularly park there and, um. And with my new STR, that's the approved parking area for that, since there was no. Good parking on View Street that was meeting the requirement. So I just didn't know if. Are those parking spaces were, um, considered in the parking study?
They were not. That's a good question. Maybe I should mention it in, in the study at least, um. But certainly alley parking has been an issue in the past in terms of. Emergency access, um, certainly. Um.
Right.
Yeah, I think the boundary between the. In the alley, it's not public parking, I guess, is, is. You know, this was really focused on home street parking and the alley parking is all on, would all be on private property. Um, and not available to the public, which is why it wasn't included, but it's definitely. An issue that comes up in town.
Okay, yeah. And maybe just with right of ways and things like that, uh, making sure that there's, um. Cause sometimes, um, in that particular alley of. If a homeowner is parking on one side. Of the alley and another homeowner's parking, you, you know, sometimes you have to be very careful going through there. So I was just wondering. Maybe it doesn't need to be a, maybe just making sure there's some kind of. Caveat as, as you wrote in some of the other places where there's making sure there's plenty of. Um, emergency access or a good right of way for traffic throughway in the, um, in the alleys. And then the only other thing I noticed that the state park parking. Is not included and that's because it's state park.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely public access. But yeah, I didn't do stagecoach, um, or state park, um. So that's not city controlled.
Okay, I, I just think the state park is close to. Walking trails or, or walkability through Trinidad. Um, so I, I don't know if we could. If we need to or not, it doesn't look like there's a. Parking problem, um, so we might not have to worry about that, working with the state on seeing if that could be. I'm sure people park there publicly and walk. So. I was just wondering if there was some. Um, reason why that wasn't included in the study. And then my last question is more long-term future, um. Conditions, um, or capacity. And some of us were at the Trinidad. Rancheria's community meeting last night. Um, regarding their project and. I was surprised that their project also included. Uh, coming into, um, the city of Trinidad. With various different, um, additional, um. Points of access both to. Um. North West Haven Drive and then coming into. To town. Possibly roundabouts, possibly some other changes to scenic drive. So I, I was just curious, Trevor, if we've gotten their study or their data to say, is there such a. Capacity increase in traffic flow? That there's these needed changes? And if there is that capacity of traffic. What do we need to be planning for in the future? Um, if they're projecting, uh, maybe it's just because of casino development and their hotel eventually development, et cetera. But if there's capacity. That we need to be thinking about, we should have that data to see. If it impacts the parking, uh, situation in the townsite of Trinidad. Those are my initial thoughts as I was listening to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheri. That was a lot of. Good point. Um. So yeah, maybe in the summary or somewhere the, the, just some commentary about the things that were not included and why.
Yeah, and yeah, I think Roth Wayne and, you know, because those are state parks, those are public.
Alleyways, I think, uh, I think it would go a long way. Um, just to clarify what should, shouldn't happen, if there is or is not an easement to the city for parking in the alleyways, if the only parking is non-private property, you know? Just at least kind of the.
And, and I believe the city has a requirement of this.
Right.
Requirement that you're supposed to.
But the alleyway between view and ocean, I know exactly, I think where Sheri's referring to, there, you can definitely see the well-worn slalom course between people that park on one side, the ocean side, people that park on the view side to access.
And they're not, and they're partially.
Right. And some are not in the dedicated spaces for their, anyway, separate subjects. All right. Any other public comments? See, you're available, bring that to us. Or do you have anything you need from us?
I think so. Yeah.
I, I apologize. I had a question on the last chart. Juridictions. Jurisdiction chart.
That's new. Oh. Yeah, I think you're.
Sorry, I wanted to.
I bet you have questions, but no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I flipped over and I, yeah.
There's one to add regarding the. State park parking is, I guess theoretically restricted, right? Because there's a gate that is at least theoretically sometimes closed. I know. Sun set to sunrise, I believe. I don't know that it's actually ever opened or closed or locked or unlocked. At least theoretically is restricted.
The last time that I think there was a discussion on that, there was a problem that they didn't have the. Resources to open and close it. So I don't think they do anything with it yet. But that was probably three or four years ago.
I think you can make that even, but that's not always. Pretty accessible.
All right. And so we'll move on to. Great. Then let's go to CDP regulations.
Great. Thank you. Great.
Does anybody here need a brief break before you give these last two?
Yeah, I'd like to take this one. Yeah, uh, this one's pretty straightforward, I think. Um, so. This is a task that we were kind of looking at streamlining. Residential projects by sort of streamlining. Permitting process, design review by looking at, um, exemptions, permit exemptions, and then administrative permit provisions and. Um. We had to drop a, a lot of that for a number of reasons. One. We're not going to be able to align the design review and the CDP requirements, I don't think right now. When you get design review, it constitutes approval of your CDP. Um, and. We don't actually have a separate process for CDPs, which becomes problematic because there are some things that. CDPs, but not design review or something else. Um. For me. Um. And. So, and then also. And, and there's a pretty specific list of CDP coastal development permit exemptions in the coastal act regulations. We really can't be gate from those. We can't be less strict or more strict. Um, we were looking at being more strict, um, to, again, to align it with designer view. Um, and then the other thing we looked at were. So, um. The, the coastal commission can approve what are called exclusion orders, um, for local jurisdictions. And actually the exemptions that are in the city zoning ordinance. Is an exclusion order. They kind of follow the. How they're weird. They're not great. Um, but the most important thing I think that was in that was for septic system repairs. That's really the, one of the key things. Um, that I would like to see in those. But anyway, um, and ended up. We couldn't really do that at this time under this grant. Um, so we ended up with really just these administrative CDP provisions, um. Which I think will really be helpful for some projects, especially and, and we do need them for ADUs, um, so. So, and I can approve. Septic repairs, um, administratively under this in areas that aren't appealable. That's, that's really limited. Um, but anyway, so I, I think at this point, these regu-, again, we tried to tailor them originally. We tried to tailor them more to Trinidad, but, um. It basically is just now follows coastal act regulations and is what it is, um, for the most part. Um. And there are some things that I, I included in here that will eventually. Reference other sections of. The zoning ordinance, but we don't have those right now, like coastal development permit findings. Those will be in their own section. That's. But anyway. So, um, so this is another S. I believe SP2 grant task and, um. Again, it's required for the ADU ordinance. So. I, I think I'll probably combine the two eventually. It'll be the ADU ordinance and we'll also have this, this section added, um, as well. So. Um, it's, you know, it's not as easy a process as you might hope, uh. For an administrative permit, um, you still have to make. So the required CDP findings, I, I have to make that or whoever the zoning administrator is, um. And so you basically still have to submit a full application, all the information you would have to submit if you were doing a full application. It still gets noticed to the neighbors and it still gets reported to the planning commission. So it's not as much of an abbreviated process, but it doesn't require a public hearing. So we would probably. Add a, a consent agenda, um, for the planning commission that we don't do now. And it's just reported and if someone wants to pull it and discuss it, um. Again, and you could vote for it to go to a full CDP and. So, um, it's not, uh, the other option was, um. There is a process, we can do waivers, um, for, for projects. So that would be another option. And I believe that also is only limited to the appealable. Or non-appealable area of all areas. And the waivers, you can't add any conditions on them. So. Just thought that wouldn't be as useful. We did discuss that at, you know, waivers versus administrative permits. Um, that process is a little simpler, um, but. Anyway, this is what we have. Based on our discussions with coastal.
Stat report or shall we dive in?
It's kind of a existential question. Um. With Underwood not qualifying as the first public road. Are there any? Impacts to previous projects that would have been. Uh, appealable?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So the way you've described it here is, um, Underwood is not the, uh, first public road any longer.
Well, it never was. I tried to make it the first public road. So it isn't current, it isn't currently?
Yes.
Uh.
Wasn't.
No, it never was.
That makes me feel bad.
And, and I have to apologize. This is not. This is, this is the wrong version of the regulations. Two two. This is March. The old.
Oh, oh.
Version. This is not, I don't, we shouldn't spend time discussing it. I was hoping to get a recommendation from you tonight, but. But anyway, it's going to go to the AD, into the ADU ordinance anyway, so it wouldn't go straight to the city council, but I apologize. This is.
Yes. It's significantly different or subtly different?
Yes. Cause this whole list, that was what made me notice first is this whole list of projects here is not. Which, again, this is what we tried to tailor to Trinidad and it's, we just have to go back to what's supposed to happen. Which is. That's probably the primary difference. Sorry. Dang it.
I would be continuing to later do that, right?
Yes. I mean, if you want out of the map, um. And I, if you, if you wanna, I mean, if you have any questions about that map, um. Or the. What a flow chart, those are correct. But again, I. I'm correcting this, uh, yeah, so this, uh, appealable area is kind of cut off this Underwood section here. Across basically, basically goes up Parker Street. It's, it's a little south of Parker Street, um, cause that's, that's the 300 feet from a bluff is that one. But yeah, so right now I'm working on a map that looks at the different. ADU. Setbacks, um, so that we can kind of look at, but you can get an idea, this yellow part of the city, um. Administrative permits are not going to.
All right. Since we're continuing that, I, it's my best. Let's move on to. Yeah, number four, the water conservation permitting.
So this is a continuation. We discussed this at the special meeting July 12th. This is a LEAP grant task looking at ways to conserve water. Um, we've completed. Couple of the subtasks, which was to look at water use over time and, um. And sort of set up a system by which we can monitor water use into the future. So we've done that. Um, the conclusion from the planning commission was that. Since water use is down, there's no need to do anything kind of heavy-handed regulatory at this time, but we wanted to monitor water use over time. So. To that end. I. On the very last page is an outline of what annual water report might look like and. But then we would, we could stick in individual, because once you export that data to Excel, you could use MailMarge to put. You know, individual water use for each person and generate that. So there's that to look at. And then the other. Part of that grant task that we've been working on is our landscaping regulation. So the primary piece of that is the water efficient landscape ordinance. Um, which we're basically just going to refer to the state standard, but then it's in the city's ordinance. So that people know what applies and can look for it. Um, but I also took the opportunity to pull some ideas. Out of our general plan update policies that, um, apply to landscaping and would help conserve water with landscaping. Um, so that's what's in section A. And then to sort of help you put that in context, I pulled out all the various policies from the draft. By the plants and landscaping. So you can see what those look like. Um, most of them come from the design review. Regulations. And then I also, uh, yeah, amended the regulations as we discussed. At the last meeting, trying to simplify the requirement. at the last meeting, trying to simplify the requirements for landscaping plans. I'm trying to kind of, we talked about, you know, you can check certain boxes. You won't need to go through this process. And, you know, we might have to think, well, we've got a lot of landscaping policies in design review, but maybe we don't want those in design. Something to think about to balance that. And then also just the prescriptive, just for, again, for context, this is the prescriptive option from the state water efficient landscaping ordinance. So if you're, if you're less than 2,500 square feet of landscaping, you don't have to do all the as many of the calculations, you can just follow this prescriptive. I think that's what we're going to get.
Any questions specific to the staff? We kind of dive in. I have one, and I think we talked, I know we talked about it last time, but I possibly can't remember the three potential definitions for landscaping you have down there.
Yeah.
Are you wanting us to kind of?
Sure.
Go on the floor and then where?
You don't have to choose one. You can make up your own, but those are just some examples. And maybe there's pieces of different ones that you like. But yeah, I think it would be good to have a definition.
I'd like to want to sit here.
Thanks. Then where would that fall likely in?
Put out as a definition.
To that point, I had thought, I don't know if it would be appropriate to the definitions, but maybe at the very beginning, right? Where it says landscaping and screening between that and A landscaping is the definite, you know, here's the definition right there. You know, I'm not doing that great.
I mean, it's, it's included in, in the water efficient landscape, landscape areas defined there.
Yeah. I was thinking for someone trying to figure out what they do and don't need to have a process they need to do to landscape. Okay. And I'm, I'm not doing anything on that list. I don't even have to keep reading kind of a, you know, opportunity. Alright, so anything else on page one?
Your, your comment, your question was these will need to be defined as for human consumption. Kitchen gardens and fruit trees. Is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. And it wasn't necessarily a question, but I think Chris, you mentioned edible landscaping. And, but I think you could define a lot of things as edible. So I thought, and I, I think your intent was more like a vegetable garden or herb, you know, it could be herb garden. And so, so I was thinking, you know, for, that we should define that as being as opposed to just putting in an edible landscaping. And we could define edible landscaping too as that, but.
Your irrigation, I, I don't recall seeing in the standard here, anything about if they're using gray water. That's something I was interested in.
Yeah, I, I added something about if you're not using exceptions for having to do a landscape.
And, and I guess if somebody's using non-potted water.
Doesn't matter what kind of irrigation.
Do I care that they're standing with a hose and no, you have to get put in a drip system?
No.
I mean.
Well, I, I guess one of the issues was, one of the things that we talked a lot about, those runoff.
True.
So I would think that you would want to regulate.
You will, but it doesn't matter if they're spraying it all over the place as long as it's not running off their property.
Well, that's what I'm referring to.
So that's, that's, that's covered in the water waste. And for addition.
Low head rate and excessive runoff overspray.
In reality, it's going to be rainwater, right? Not gray water.
It, it could be, maybe someone wants to do their own shower. Obviously dishwasher, kitchen sink.
As it meets, I mean, the county.
I mean, people can choose to design that into their home with their different system. So.
Yes.
Some jurisdictions encourage and water, I've added. What about under irrigation methods versus systems? I know that's kind of minute, but I don't know, system sounds like it needs to be timer, this and that. If I just want to, you know, have a bubbler hose that I hook up to from my rain tank and turn it on twice a week. I don't know.
That's fine.
Well, okay. So that, that was a little confusing to me because how did this all play together? Because if you look at the prescriptive compliance option, that is very, very sophisticated. They're talking controllers, regulators, shut off valves and all irrigation emission devices must meet the requirements of some ANZI standard.
Well, that's it here above 500 square feet of new landscaping or 2,500 square feet of rehab. So as long, I think as long as this irrigation doesn't kind of standard doesn't conflict, because this also applies to its directly applies to existing landscaping where this prescriptive only applies to the 500 square feet of new or 2,500 square feet of rehabilitated.
That's what's missing because see, we just say this is appendix D prescriptive compliance. And I read that to mean that as long as these requirements, regardless of the size.
I guess I should have taken out the appendix D because it's not, this is not to put in Trinidad's regulations. This was for your context. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes me feel a little better. Uh, this is draconian.
Well, but it is, but it is the requirement.
Yeah, I was gonna say this comes out of the state, which
And this is the simple option. I know the, the ordinance is like, it's like 50 pages long.
Yeah, I, I remember we, you had given it.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
Yeah.
So just a question on that. So then with this prescriptive compliance option, we can't change anything. It is literally.
You can make it more strict.
Okay.
So, so again, I was trying to figure out, I apologize, but how does this fit in? Will this be in our?
Appendix D, no, no, this prescriptive option would not be in our ordinance. It is basically referred to in section D of what I have of these proposed regulations. And I just, since we're talking about landscape plans and the requirements for landscape plans, I thought it might be helpful if you have, I mean, this is the state's requirements. If you, again, if you have more than 500 square feet of new or 2,500 square feet of rehabilitated landscape, this is, this is the simple option.
So this could apply though, if I have 2,500 square feet or 500 square feet of new as this, as, as this is this draft, assuming this is going to go forward.
Yeah.
I am going to be held to appendix D or it's an option.
That's right. Yes, you are. And, and that's what section D refers to. It refers to if you have that. Yeah. So any, any area of 500 square feet of new landscaping or 2,500 square feet of mo- modified landscaping has to comply with the wellow. And so I tried to, and sometimes it was a little confusing, but I tried to fit our landscaping plans into, so these landscape plans requirements only apply to less than that. Cause if you're over those, you have to do the wellow. If you're less than that, then you do the city's landscape.
Does the state language define landscape?
Yes, yeah, it, there's, again, there's probably 10 pages of definitions.
Cause I believe the definition matters, right? I mean, on something, but it occurs to me that the definition matters now that we're talking about specific square footages of landscape.
Mm hmm. And, and it does, I mean, there is in here is landscape area means. And so those are what you calculate your areas. And so they don't care about hardscapes, even though some landscaping does or might be design review. And we care about stormwater, but since it's water, they only care about water. It's a little bit different.
The clarifying question.
It's.
So A, B, and C, right? The proposed ordinance. Y universal, right?
Well, I think A applies universally.
Sorry. Section D, that, that, the wheel of, that wheel of, that only comes into play.
If you're greater than 500 square feet of new landscaping or 2,500 square feet.
If you're not.
If you're less than that. So, and then A applies to everything.
Right.
Regardless of the size. B, the intent is to apply to new and modified landscaping, less than wellow.
Right. 500, 2,500 again, right?
Yeah. And then the screening is specific to commercial properties and is an aesthetic, is basically an aesthetic.
Okay.
Maybe a flow chart would be helpful.
Yeah.
And also looking at the structure, I mean, A, it's, it's fairly clear, right? Cause right off of that, the following standard child applied to all landscaping, which we now know is all new and existing landscaping, right? B, you could just include a similar sentence, the following standard child applied to all landscaping less than 500, all new landscaping of less than 500 square feet or 2,500 square feet. Just some persistence.
Then screening says these regulations are intended, but it, I could add something, they shall apply to commercial projects.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And then D.
Kind of back to page one, was there anything on one? Can't flip through here.
Well, I've sort of mentioned this before, but now is it possible that depending on the definition of landscaping that we adopt? There's not.
We need to look at 500, yeah. Because if we're including hardscape and declarations, then that area could be different. So I, I need to look at that. Maybe D and maybe D is landscaping as defined by, and it's a different.
Well, there, there's, there's actually two, two things going on here. One is the definition of landscaping and all three definitions here include the non-vegetation type of stuff.
Yeah.
But for the purpose of defining the area, uh, you don't include the non-vegetation.
That's for the, for the wellow. But for the city, maybe you do include those in your area.
Um, why would we want to?
Do you want to look at it? I mean, it is, hardscapes are part of design review.
Well, but, but again, I guess what I'm, oh, I see what you're saying. That would kick in then the higher requirements if we deleted the hardscapes.
No.
I mean, if, if we didn't, if we didn't, I'm sorry.
Yes, potentially.
Yeah.
But I think it's, you know, the city's looking at, at it differently. You're not just looking at water conservation.
So how would you measure a hardscape with vegetation periodically throughout it?
And, you know, really I was looking at this as, oh, so if you're between, but even if you're in the wellow, that should still be designer view if you're looking at landscaping as part of design review. Well, and so I guess under the grant, we were really supposed to be looking at water conservation, the wellow specifically. We don't necessarily need to have these in our, we don't have to have the reference to the wellow for in our regulations, it applies regardless of whether it's on our regulations or not. One of the reasons for including it in the regulations was to make sure people are aware of the requirement. So they go look through the city's regulations. How would they know that there's a state law that they have to fly with? Maybe. So, you know, I'm just thinking about next steps, because this grant's ending. What do we do for next steps? We can continue to pursue this separate, or we could wrap it into the larger LCP update that we're going to do. We could just move forward with the wellow section. Not just a huge need for that. Maybe in the interim, the solution would be more to include reference to the wellow in our application. So we are going to be updating our application forms. I mean, six months or so. I mean, and maybe that's where we wrap wellow in in the interim until we get to the larger LCP update. Cause we don't, I don't, you know, I don't know that landscaping is necessarily a planning commission priority. I think, you know. And so with the ending of this grant, you know, I don't know that it's a priority to continue to pursue this outside of a larger LCP update. Unless you want to continue the momentum. But we could wrap wellow into our forms at least.
The, the way we've got it set up now, now that I understand where the prescriptive stuff came in, it does make sense when you look at paragraph D. Because it says, in addition to the requirements of this section, all applicable that developed and it goes on to define what that is. And it's very clear, 500 square feet and above or modified of 2,500. And then it or modified of 2,500. And then it does specifically describe what is included for the purposes of that section, section B. So, um, driveways, parking lots, decks, gravel or stone walks, and other pervious and non-pervious hardscapes um, are, are are designated for non-development. So that, that, that kind of clears it up for me at least.
Okay.
I just was having trouble trying to figure out where that other thing fit in now.
Well, and I think B is though it's not going to fit nicely in between. Um, because I still think, again, if you're over 2,500 square feet of modified landscaping, you're probably at a grading permit and probably at design review anyway, for example. So you know, does B still apply to those projects that also have a wellow requirement and my thing is I didn't want someone to have to do two landscaping. But is this wellow plan going to suffice for a design review?
Well, basically, it's the way it's set up right now under paragraph C. New project that's above the two requirements, 500 and 2,500 shall comply with subsection B below. So that flips it over right to wellow. Isn't that right? In addition to other applicable requirements in this section, if there are any.
So, yeah, yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's fully covered.
And I think previous, previous comments where we said that, um, highly unlikely that we're going to have many instances where there's going to be more than 500 square feet of new of landscaping. So.
It, it probably, you know, most likely be a new project. Of course, maybe a substantial link.
The criteria to have to submit a landscape plan, right? B.
Yeah, that was.
500, 2,500 again, or it doesn't read that way right now. Why? New development, okay, I understand that, but significant expansion. I guess it does then. I'm sorry, we needed a B. For single family, okay. I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm trying to think through the most likely time that this is even going to come up for somebody and it's going to be, I would think, someone that wants to redo landscaping on their property or new development. New development is pretty clear. You know, that's going to trigger all sorts of stuff.
Yeah.
A lot of radar that.
So, so this one is, yeah, so this is getting that in between the modified landscaping of more than 500 square feet, but less than 25 where the wellow kicks in. Or if it's within 100 feet of a niche or within 50 feet of the edge of a bluff, because those are where, those are basically where the CDP exemptions don't apply. So technically landscaping within 50 feet of a bluff requires a coastal.
The question under, second. Number four, the building permit. What projects? Am I understanding this right? Then as long as you're under 500 or 2,500, there's no building permit required or?
What's actually?
Page two. Exceptions, building permit. I guess it's not clear reading this, when do you and when you don't, but you have to get a building permit to do landscaping on your property.
So one of the keys to the wellow is if you are doing 2,500 square feet of rehabilitated of over 2,500 square feet of rehabilitated landscaping, but that's all you're doing and it doesn't require a permit, then wellow doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply?
Doesn't apply. So that's it's, I think I need a flow chart. Um, so the wellow applies to
Very true.
any development requiring a permit.
Where, where is that?
So I'm looking at D1.
Under prescriptive?
No, on page.
Oh, D1.
Yeah. On page four, on page 82 of the packet.
Okay.
Uh, so the wellow requirements apply to any development requiring a permit that includes new landscaping of 500 square feet or unmodified landscaping between. So and, and that's where it gets weird to me because that's a huge, to me, that's a big loophole. So you could, you know, do an addition to your building and then later come back and say you're going to do landscaping. That doesn't require a permit. Until you get a roundling ordinance, that seems weird to me. Um, but so it's only if it requires a permit. So grading, CDP, design review, building permit. If it doesn't require any of those now. In Trinidad, if you're disturbing more than 1,000 square feet, it usually requires to a kick in a grading. But if you're just planting.
So this is where this flow chart or matrix of, you know, what does or doesn't require is helpful, I think, for someone that wants to comply. Right? Frequent to get lost in those discussions or have a hard time.
What, what, well, I, yeah, but I D1. That we were just, that you just referenced. Is, is that our work or is that the state's?
It's the state's work.
Okay, so they, they are somehow or another asserting a permit into this process. Yeah, we get a flow chart.
If you're doing 5,000 square feet of landscaping, but it doesn't require any kind of permit.
Or 2,499. That could do another 2,000. I mean, there's ways around every.
It seems like there's, yeah, that's a big loophole there. Which is, which is one of the reasons I thought Trinidad might need its own.
There's going to be. Uh, that was page two, I think, right?
Oh, my God.
Do we assess standard report?
We, we still have some time and budget in this task. And then if I'm going to work on a flow chart. I mean, I think just starting a flow chart with our existing rules, um, including the wellow. Be good starting. And then how does this fit in?
So, uh, current and proposed is what you're saying, two, actually two flow charts. Clear the devil is the detail.
I mean, I do have a few more questions, though, just to keep going through.
Yeah.
Um, if that's good for everybody, just give you a little bit more when you come back to flow charts, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so maybe not on page two.
Oh, yes. Um, I, I, I had a question on exception.
Okay.
Um, with two, actually, two, A and B. The first one, do not include landscaping that uh, it requires irrigation of potable water beyond the initial year establishment. I, I, I don't know what would happen if you were in a drought for two years and you felt like you wanted to put some water on your drought tolerant plants to keep them alive. And yet this says that, um, you have to have landscaping that you could never water after the initial year. I don't understand that.
Only to avoid the only to avoid the landscape.
Uh huh. Okay, so.
And I think that actually comes from that's an exception of the, in the wellow as well.
Is to B also in wellow?
No, that is from the city's. There's that policy in our general plan that says, so again, this is tied to the design review and view protection requirements. And there's that policies that says vegetation over three, well, structures and vegetation over three feet high won't be allowed. That's where the three feet. And that's what our views and vegetation ordinance is based on. And that's what a number of our design criteria are looking at. So that's where that's.
So if I I, I'm caught in this catch 22 where right now, um, I don't need a landscaping plan if I don't have something that's less than three feet. But as soon as I put in a plant that's over three feet, I need a landscaping plan.
Well, that's, I think that's a, a for discussion. And I think, yeah, I mean, but that, so that's where that comes from. That's where the three feet comes from. And I think, you know, I think one of the things we need to do is look again at our design criteria where we look at landscaping and kind of reconcile where we're including landscaping in our design review criteria. Are we going to require landscaping to be in our design review criteria? I mean, do you? I mean, that's, that's sort of the overall philosophical question. Um.
Yeah, thank you.
But if you'd wanted to plant a four foot tall shrub, you could keep it, right? It's nice.
Well, I guess it's not if it's less than 500 square feet.
So I would need a landscaping plan.
No, if it's a single family project, um, that includes for development, so it's associated with some sort of development that includes more than 500 square feet. So if you just wanted to plant a shrub, then it's one of them. If you're doing more than 500 square feet of landscaping or a project that requires a permit that's associated with landscaping, then.
One a year, one, one treated year, stay out of the radar. All right. Uh, meeting on page two, anyone else?
Uh, page three. I had a couple of questions, um, out of the screening section, um, requiring regular watering.
Well, this.
That just struck me as contrary to kind of our.
Sure. Which one, which subject?
Uh, C1 maintenance, that's maintenance on who were appropriate, pruning, cleaning, fertilizing regularly. I mean, I understand the intent.
Yeah.
Maybe wiring by the most efficient means possible or.
It does say where appropriate, um.
Watering to establish. Well, I don't know. I mean, the screening stuff might not be, no. Yeah, I don't know. It just.
Well, I think, okay, so, um, I have, so these are the existing, this is the one section that's in the existing ordinance. Um, so these are the only landscape standards in, in the city's current zoning ordinance. And I did not, I have not, I think they need work, but I didn't mess with them because they weren't water conservation related. But I think, you know, you bring up a point that that is, um, they are. Um, but when we do the overall update, we do need to look at these, I think, more closely.
And then who is the design assistance committee in the next section?
Um, that would be the planning commission plus one member of the city council.
Okay.
Is how the ordinance was originally written. But that didn't get updated in here, huh? What does it say? Does it?
There are two materials.
Yeah.
Where treaty required all acceptable to design assistance committee.
Okay, so.
So you said PC plus one council member.
Yeah. So that's how the ordinance was originally written in around two or two, we did an ordinance amendment to just to change all the design assistance committee to planning commission. Um, because because it created an even number of votes, which had been problematic. And, and then the city council member, if it got a project as appeal, would have to recuse themselves. And then there's an even number. Um, so, but, but that was that was never certified by the coastal commission. So you guys are still the design assistance committee. You're just minus your city council member. And I, and we must. And, uh, that amendment must have over missed this section. Because it's in the codified. If you look online, you don't see design assistance committee that got in, but this, this one got missed.
Anyone else on three? Let me on four. Uh, under the dense landscaping solid wall fence for screening purposes, right? That is retroactive or no? It is, I mean, as I read, you know, it's in existing places should have had it. I can think of spots in town where there are no screening between. And I guess would it apply if there's an adjacent parcel next to?
It's not clear whether it's supposed to exist same or retro.
A question, I guess.
Well, under the, the first sentence under screen.
Yeah.
Says these regulations are intended to protect law and to improve the appearance of new commercial development in cities.
Well, it, the, I added commercial name because we talked about that last time, but it new development. So, so yeah, you're right. Thank you.
Okay.
So it applies to new development.
And so then looking back at A, these screens should also be then at least 50% by area natives. Is that true?
Yes.
Those pants exist.
But, but now that one specific now, it does say the following standard shall apply to all landscaping, but it does say new plants. So we're not going to make people rip up their existing. Yes, for any new projects.
Also four.
And I do need to have, you know, before we start incorporating this, um, these TSHA requirements into the regulations. So we need to have a conversation with coastal commission staff about whether, what's required. You know, this is in corporate abstinence. Is that because the coastal commission required that to be in their ordinance or is it because corporate wanted? Guessing that's because.
There's a road or a right of way. Does that eliminate the adjacency requirement? Do you know?
Well, I did mention that I think adjacent needs to be defined. Did mention that because I wasn't clear on that. Thin or maybe a budding would be a better word. Thin or maybe a budding would be a better word. A trail maybe, um. That's a good question.
This is, exactly. Now, wasn't there regarding issues, wasn't there an instance for the ESHA in parks in place?
Yes. So in the, when a landscape plan is required, it's if you're within 100 feet of an ESHA. And that's because again, CDP exemptions.
So is that 100 feet, then? It's not adjacent to that.
That's not, I don't think that's adjacent, no. So you'd be required to have a landscape plan, but not necessarily.
Prescriptive compliance option, is there any increased? Restrictions, that's fair to all without due to this.
I, I, the only comment I would make is that, you know, some of this is. Your credit. That probably needs to be defined maybe or somewhere. Like I said, anti specs are not exactly the easiest thing to interpret. That's. Make it any more difficult.
Okay, it's a check.
Maybe even turf, I hope, is designed somewhere.
I'm sure, I'm, again, it's, it's gotta be a list of, it's a huge list of them.
These are just the existing.
These are just the existing, again, for context. I would like to implement on the annual water report. I, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, the two thoughts I had on there, if it's a new owner, absolutely, I would suggest including the previous owners. And maybe share with them, hey, the previous owner had X number of occupants in the home. Um, but, you know, why not give them some kind of data at all? Yeah, using, well, why not about the house from a retired person that died? So. Um, and personally, I would love to see the individual data first. And then the system data after that, because if we're only going to have a couple of minutes for someone to read something else from the city or whatever their approach is.
Sure.
I'd rather have the most meaningful stuff, you know?
I think, yeah, when you're talking about getting things mailed to people, right? I mean. I really personally be most interested in my individual data and be informed that the system wide data exists on the city website.
Okay. So maybe two separate reports.
Is this saying the individual data is going to differ by household, right? The system wide data.
Yes.
So that I can just remain static on the website and just type the website. So people, app this QR code and you can.
Yeah. And that would cut down, because maybe this could be put on like a postcard or something. Measure. For that goes to the planning commission.
Yeah, just one says like, please see. I don't see a deck of slash water use more system.
No, I, I was just, uh, I just recently received and I started to say something, but Mike Miller is trying to get everyone on this list to put their contact information on the website. So my thought was to follow up with what you said, Chris, is then to put all of the data on the website. Not even have to send out anything. Cause it would all be then.
Yeah.
If that could be.
The, the city website now is an opt in thing where you can choose what notifications you want to receive by text.
But it could be in a bit like. But if, but if 50 people are signed up and I send the individual data, it's going to go to those 50 people.
No, I, I, I got the impression, well, that's a good point. Everyone is supposed to have their own individual email addresses, I understand, right?
If you want to, it's optional. You don't have to subscribe. If you want to get some notifications from the city, then.
City email address?
No, it's, it's, it's a way for the city to blast information out. So there's that. When you sign up, there's an option for emergency notifications, water system, happen, happen. Also, it's, it's your venture. Uh, and I chose everything for now to see what kind of volume I get sent my way.
Probably not much, though.
But, you know, there could be something on there, you know, water data. Yes, I'd like the annual report data set to be yes or no. I don't know.
Okay.
But another way to collect at least.
Yeah, and I admit I haven't looked at Dwight's email that closely, but it just looked like it could be personalized, but I'll look at it.
All right, uh, we will open it up for public comment then. For the water conservation permitting and landscaping discussion, if there is a. Team. Still nobody with us here in the room? All right, and bring it back to us. Anything else for Trevor? Trevor, do you have what you need for us?
Yeah. Any other comments on the report? It might probably be easier to comment if you actually had a, had one in front of you, but.
It's true that. I see that it would be beneficial by zone.
It's just more the idea of comparing your property to similar properties like.
You think to be that much similarity?
I, I made a suggestion of that kind of because on the PG and E bill, at least it says, you know, the average household.
Yeah.
Uses that too. At least it gives you a metric. Well, yeah, and I've got three kids and all the people around me are, you know.
Maybe the average, maybe just average residence.
Uh, I, I'm not, it's a hard, right? Just we were looking at the streamline a little bit, but.
But I think it might be because you're comparing, you're like, well, I use less water than I did last year. But then you look and you're like, oh, but I use a lot more water than everybody else.
Trevor, that's. I think that's important information, frankly.
It's, okay, it's fine, yeah.
It's patient. It can use us some shame. All right. Let me all move on from that agenda item. Mission report. To be determined, that's all I have to say. Anything else staff report wise?
So the SB two and LEAP grants are winding down, basically done at the end of the month. We have to submit funding invoices at the end of next month. So I'm working on the final reports. We will, there are a number of loose ends. And I would like to continue to work on. You know, there's a couple of ordinances that the city council already passed that I need to get submitted to the coastal commission, but we're trying to figure out the codification, the numbering system. It's been very complicated. And, you know, I think it might be worth working on, continuing to work on the ADV ordinance as well. finalize the parking study. But some of this stuff is going to end up getting wrapped up into the part of your LCP update. So we're going to move on to the LCP update grant. There's an OPC grant that is hopefully going to start moving along a little bit better. And you have a REAP grant. That's what's going to redo the application. Move on to that. And then I've got a couple of permit applications that will be coming. For a new house on Langford. Tristan's looking at the subdivision of his property. Taking both those applications.
In the past, you have provided us with a list of various grants.
Yeah, I can do kind of an annual planning projects priorities.
Especially since we're transitioning from SB two and LEAP and going to, what was it, a REAP?
Or LEAPing or REAPing.
We're REAPing now. It went from local to regional.
Oh, okay. So it might be useful just to understand what's in those grants.
Something relating to the general plan, what has been touched, what hasn't been touched, what's kind of almost a color.
I probably already had that and.
I mean, I would love to know.
Cause I think I did that for the council maybe last year and we haven't really done much.
Left on the general plan for us to tackle and, and then I really would like to revisit signage and start working on a signage master plan or at least beginning to look at our ordinance. Signs, signs are, I know, I am, signs are changing in town. I'm, I'm hearing whisperings and rumblings and so. Just want to make sure that we're ahead of the curve. There's, you know, another election cycle coming. I know that was controversial. We, our ordinance was silent in a couple of areas of concern. So I want to, it's been, you know, a full cycle.
So, I mean, what do you envision as a signage master plan? I mean, is this an update of the sign regulations?
I think to start, yeah, the signage master plan, I guess for me would be more. What is the, the city want our signage to look like? Is there theming? Is there? Everything comes to drift. I, I don't know what it would look like, you know?
Well, we, we did, we did that a little bit with our design review.
Right. Some of the electronic and.
Yeah. So that, that would be a starting point.
But then also, you know, where we know we've had cast or silent sections where we haven't had enough guidance to really answer questions. Let's, let's try and fill some of that in. But I'm just afraid that if we don't, I anticipate that these things will come to us anyway. So I'd rather have some discussion.
I would say, I mean, the last few years have been, I mean, signs are, have always been a huge issue, but like the last few years, there hasn't been much discussion.
Well, there, there probably should be. Every time I come off the freeway and I see the new barber shop sign there, I go.
On the Caltrans sign, yeah.
It's not legal. I don't think it is.
Yeah. You trust the one on the Caltrans.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the freeway?
It's up, as, as you come off the freeway, northbound freeway exit. You look up and there's that, is it Caltrans?
It's, it's, yeah, I think it's a Caltrans sign, like what, you know, what build up. You know, where each services are.
And, and the new barber shop has their sign kind of a carport.
Well, Caltrans will take that down, actually.
I just, they haven't seen it yet, I guess.
Wow.
And I, I, no, I was just going to say, I, I think one of the things we've really got to consider really, really hard is enforcement. Because that's been the problem with science. Always.
Well, that's the problem also.
I know, of course, but. Nice gift too.
Why, we're talking about all these new regulations, why haven't?
Part of that, absolutely, is having the tools and the, the rules lined out so that when somebody comes to the office and says, hey, I saw this. Well, oh, yep, here you go. You can't do that. You know, that's where.
Yeah, uh, uh, yes, well, I'm heading, yeah.
And, you know, my, you know, a lot of communities have like a signed permit. It's a little bit easier process than.
I will follow up with the rainwater catchment is there. I believe I understood at the coastal resiliency meeting, what was the one in here that was hosted? Angela and Becky. Anyway, I, I thought I heard it back or maybe the council meeting that there's part of the grant funding is to design a kind of shovel ready, small scale residential pre-approved or simple set of plans. So I wanted to follow.
Not as proud as Axum, but that's what we've always talked about that we want. We want a free like engineered stamp of whatever kind of plan that someone could just put in the rainwater catchment now. So they're, well, they're going to put in a demonstration project here and maybe those plans could be scaled to something that residents can do. That's. But I, I don't, I don't know that that was specifically part of the grant, but I will ask because I think it should be.
I thought. It's a GHD, that's part of their scope to.
Okay. Maybe.
Yeah.
That would be great. But no, there's some money left over to that grant. You're looking for waste of that.
All right. Anything else for future agendas? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Official did assign. And I don't know why it never went anywhere.
Crossed it?
Uh, no. Truly John.
Oh, John, okay.
And I don't know why this. No, I, I mean, I was just telling.